Good evening, everyone. We are going to call to order the May 20, 2013 council meeting. If you'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in God's name, in the visible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. As we get started, our emergency management has, and public safety have, functionally, two announcements for me to make. One is, the best thing that we can do right now for the people of Oklahoma City and more are thoughts and prayers. If you want to go help, don't wait until you're officially called to come help. You will only be in the way. So, help in other ways. Do not go down there right now and get in the way. But thoughts and prayers are what is needed now for those areas. And our second, with the weather that is coming towards Stillwater, again, our emergency management is downstairs and they've got their eyes and ears on it for us. We will know anything before anyone else, so we don't need to be worrying about that and we can worry about our council meeting. Twenty yards away, we've got the best information possible and they'll let us know if we need to know something. So, anyway, there's our housekeeping before we get going. First thing we have tonight is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. You guys want to join me up here?
Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, parks, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, to hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2013, in the City of Stillwater as Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you, guys.
Sure, I just, Mayor and Council, we have several representatives here from the different public works departments that we have. We don't have a single public works department, but we have Parks and Recreation, Fleet, Traffic Engineering, Parks Recreation, Traffic, and Streets. We also have Solid Waste, Water Utilities, Facilities, but this is a small sampling of the folks that really make the things happen within the city. Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you. our consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove any items from the consent docket? Not, is there a motion on the consent docket?
A move that the consent docket be approved.
Second.
A motion and second on the consent docket. And the consent docket's approved five to zero. That takes us down to comments, not scheduled for public hearing, and we do have two requests. The first is from Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Larry. I'm here to speak to you about an agenda item later, 8B, the request for rezoning for 11,000 Virginia Avenue. This was before you, two weeks ago, and we asked that you postpone it to this to allow us to get that covenants that we were talking about then filed at the courthouse, and that has been done. I understand that the neighbors are happy and everybody is good with this rezoning, and again, we're requesting that you consider RT versus the RTM. You have any questions?
Any questions?
Please feel free to bring me back up if you do. Thanks.
Our second request is from Becky Teague.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Becky Teague, 1702 Glenwood Court. I too would like to stand here representing several people that are afraid of the storms and they're at home in their freddy holes this evening. Believe me, I do have multiples behind me, but we would like to ask the council to please vote for RT tonight on the zoning request, and that's all that's really before you. Just because I don't want to leave such an important item behind. Something wasn't accomplished. I thought it might be, but I hope that it's not snuck under the rug or kept under the rug. I really would like to implore this council, staff, or anybody to continue looking into a senior overlay district. I think, again, that it would be good for Stillwater. We market ourselves. Planning Commission and the ad hoc was not privy to that. My disappointment, not necessarily, is that it hasn't come to fruition and not a vehicle for this particular project tonight, but that it's nowhere in sight, and I think Stillwater could hold its banner high, not only to protect the seniors that we have here, but the ones that we are inviting. Not long ago, this city, the same body that we stand here, cut funding for seniors. Tonight, we find it. There's exciting things that are going to come up and be presented to me, but until we can protect our established neighborhoods and the people that have paid their dues here and will pay for the project that is presented tonight, if it comes to fruition, those people need to be respected. If it can't be transparent, at least there can be some communication. Again, the little engine that thought he could didn't even try. It's not wrong to fail. Failure makes us strong, but when we don't try to do something, or we fall short, it becomes frustrating for everyone. Again, I was asked one time in this body, how did I handle stress? And the point would be, there shouldn't be stress to formally come and approach this bench. And unfortunately, the people that I represent tonight have not been here once, but they have been here multiple, multiple times over the last four years because they bought their homes, paid for their homes, next to Enfield, which is very, very important to get it right in development, but they bought their homes next to Enfield that has been zoned RSS, single-family, from as long as I can remember, 1970, when I came here as a child. I want to hats off and congratulate Joel Walker, the guy that's going to come in here and put a senior housing project on the land. Again, we're not talking about that. We're saying we're for straight zoning RT. We have put our trust in a man that we have never seen nor met, not our elected officials tonight, and Stillwater loses because of that. We can do better. I don't browbeat you tonight. I ask for continuance in protecting the citizens here and understanding the frustration and threat that people have in coming to address this, and it shouldn't be. They're threatened by their livelihoods, their home and their safety. It's happened. Again, if development is going to occur here, it's not going to be pretty if it's done by deed restrictions. Surrey Hill can go out right now and protect themselves from Bacon Hill in 50 years when it becomes obsolete. That's, that's, Berry Creek is what I meant. Bacon Hill would be primrose, but we're not asking for protection, but we're asking for a layout from government. That's why we live inside the city limits in order for some kind of protection and planned smart growth. And again, we didn't accomplish it, please do not drop it, but tonight, I salute Joel Walker, the citizens of Stillwater, and Kelly Harris standing behind me, because you know what? We wanted to get something done. We have taken government out of the process. That's not good planning for Stillwater. That's not why I've served this city for years and years. Deed restrictions will be a car wreck if that's what has to happen, but it can, it will, and it has. Again, please vote RT tonight. That's the only decision. That's the only thing on your table. That's it. We applaud Kelly, Joel, and the neighbors one more time, and thank you in advance for your vote for RT.
Okay, we do have a public hearing this evening, and our public hearing is to receive public comments regarding requests for a telecommunications tower. Do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Ms. Dennison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paula Dennison, Development Services. What we have before you this evening is a specific use permit for a cell tower located at 3520 North Park Drive. This is the location of the property. As you can see, the light gray, that is light industrial zoning. Fairly recently, we had a text amendment to allow telecommunications towers in the light industrial zoning. As we all know, code is very fluid, and when we find that something is missing, we evaluate it, then opportunity arises to make changes to the regulations, and we have done so by allowing cell towers in the light industrial district. This is also a request for an increased height for this cell tower. Normally, the height allowance in the IL district is 75 feet. This tower is requested to be 135 feet tall, and we have the site plan, which indicates the location of the proposed tower, the lease area for it, and all of the appurtenances. The findings are that cell towers, the use and the height are allowed in the IL industrial light district with a specific use permit. The newly adopted C3 plan, our new comprehensive plan, does support this request because the property is identified as industrial, and one of the requirements for locating cell towers within the corporate limits is to look at other cell towers and see first if there is a co-location ability on those existing towers instead of putting up a new tower. Although there were two located within the required distance for co-location, the height was not adequate for this provider to locate on them, so that's why they have asked for this new tower and the increase in the height. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, staff?
Do we have any other towers that are 135? Is that what you said?
We have some rather tall. I don't have all of the heights right off the top of my head, but that is something that we can get to you if you're interested in it.
Any other questions?
Not this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will open up this public hearing, and we have no request to speak in favor or against, so we will open the public hearing and we will close the public hearing and ask staff to come back up.
Luckily, it wasn't a long curfew.
It wasn't.
Planning Commission has recommended approval as proposed.
Okay, all right. Any questions on the recommendation for staff?
I would move approval.
Motion a second to accept the recommendation? And that passes five to zero, and just to let everyone know, all severe weather warnings for Stillwater have been canceled, so, up-to-date information. Okay, that's going to take us down to general orders, and our first general order is the Our Stillwater presentation. As I understand it, we have, here we have Lisa Navricle from the Chamber of Commerce, Stan Clark from Stan Clark Companies, and Jerry Franklin from Bank First that will be making this presentation.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak with you today about our community. I've been here for about a year and a half, and I realize I am still considered the newbie to Stillwater, but one observation that is evident to our residents and leaders in Stillwater is the great passion that they all share for the community, something like I have never experienced before. Because of this passion, I've observed groups all over working on projects to improve the community. You can witness this in some of the developments that have come to fruition recently, like the dog park and the city's recycling project. Oklahoma State University campus, look how they've changed. They've invested over a half a billion dollars over the last five to six years and plan to invest an additional 250 million over the next five years. Since 2007, Stillwater Public Schools have invested 91 and a half million dollars in programs and facilities, and have plans to further enhance their campus with an athletic village and partnering to design a wellness center for the community. We know that different groups have been working at pulling together plans for improving and meeting the needs of Stillwater. I recently heard Jason Peak speak about a pavement management plan that looked at ways to not only maintain our current streets, but to grow the quantity and quality of what we have. I'd like to commend Vice Mayor Hopkins, Councilman Weaver, for your recent leadership in a capital improvement committee that worked with city staff examining critical infrastructure and public safety needs. The chamber has been part of a private sector group working since the fall of 2010 that has met with different users considering a number of projects that affect our daily lives and those looking to relocate to our community. These individuals all have special interests in the way they spend their time and what they do to make their lives more enjoyable. Although they represent different interests, they have the same mission of improving the recreation, entertainment, and cultural activities they desire to fulfill a healthy, happy lifestyle. What happens if we invest in our community the same way we have in our public schools and in the same way OSU has in their campus? What if we were to bring together groups from the public and private sector with a plan to address the needs for safety, transportation, and quality of life? Sixteen years ago, Oklahoma City believed and invested in themselves and funded eight major civic projects, turning the Bricktown area into a vibrant, thriving economic driver for Oklahoma City. They then invested again with MAPS II, renovating their public schools, and most recently in 2009 by extending a one-cent sales tax and investing in eight new projects, including a downtown park and convention center. Our Stillwater is a group made up of public and private sector individuals who dream of a MAPS version succeeding in Stillwater. Our Stillwater is bringing together the efforts of this public and private sector with a goal of developing a plan to improve the community for existing future businesses and residents while increasing the quality of life for our own citizens and meeting the infrastructure needs of a growing city. This diverse group has explored options of what our community could realistically see over several chapters or phases dependent upon how our community grows. These projects address the needs, but also create an economic driver for our community. What could we see? Development of Boomer Lake to include an amphitheater that would provide a unique space for concerts and performances, allowing for future development to include restaurants, cafes, shops, and recreational options for families like paddleboating, walking, and biking. Addressing public safety needs, which would include the building of a new fire station on the west side to accommodate the growing population. Development of a youth sports complex, providing opportunities to keep our residents at home and participating in tournaments hosted right here in Stillwater, creating a huge economic boost for our community. Updating and adding to our police fleet, ensuring that we were able to meet the safety needs of our community in operational and up-to-date equipment. We've had great success with the downtown bid district and the growth that we've seen here. Imagine a connector from the OSU campus drawing more traffic to this area and allowing for further development. Transportation. Addressing the needs of our current streets and bridges is lined out in the pavement management plan by adding and improving to meet the critical needs of a growing community. The completion of the trail system master plan by adding parking spaces along the trail paths and divided areas for walkers, runners, and bikers. The addition of sculptures and fountains, as well as addressing lighting and facilities. A feasibility study has shown us the need for a convention center. Imagine adding a connector to the OSU campus with this development. Also enhancing our parks, creating more open space and activities for families like splashpads, volleyball, and tennis courts. Plaza space for farmer's market to call home, a place for residents of all ages interested in all kinds of activities. These are the things we can do if we imagine the possibilities. Stan, imagine if 16 years ago, Stillwater been in the same place that Oklahoma City is now.
What a great lead-in.
Thank you, Lisa. That's exciting stuff. Good evening, and thank you all very much for the opportunity to present a few ideas here. I can't say I am a newbie. I think I've been here for about 42 years. Celebrate 38 years, Eskimo Joe's this summer, so we're pretty excited about that. But I certainly want to endorse this idea, this new investment in this city that we all love so very much. You know, my hunch is that the time is right. We've all seen these wonderful examples of how build it and they will come, and the phenomenal success of Oklahoma City. I think the timing is right because of the strong leadership that we enjoy. These people right here, Strong City Commission, fantastic. Stillwater Public Schools, and it's fantastic leadership and all the things they're accomplishing today. The Chamber, Lisa, you're doing just a great job. Oklahoma State University, just fantastic leadership again. You know, I look at the billion dollars that they've raised in the last six years, it's just phenomenal, and the nearly $900 million of investment that has recently gone on or will go on. Gallagher-Iberina kind of started the whole thing, and then Boone Pickens Stadium adjoining it, so it's just phenomenal. Career Tech, of course, we're blessed to have the only state agency not based in Oklahoma City right here, and it's just such a, you know, it's the best in the country. It's phenomenal, so, it's all such exciting stuff. But also, look at ASCO and Total Energy and newly attracted Devon Energy to, you know, our community, and we just heard last Friday that it looks like they may be here for about 10 years. It's a serious economic activity. So it's all very good, it's all very exciting, and I just, I just have a feeling that the time is right. I truly am a believer in, in investing, and I think you all have seen what I've tried to do, building a few enterprises here in our town. I certainly believe if you build it, they will come. So let's think MAPS, and let's change this beautiful community for the better, and let's change it forever. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Thanks for having us here this evening. Since I'm the banker, my portion of the program is relegated to numbers, since I have no creative thoughts whatsoever. But I did, I did want to just discuss with you briefly the, the economics or the investment that we perceive in, in what we're calling Phase One of a multi-phase plan, and Phase One contemplates investment in public safety, transportation, quality of life, projects and facilities for our community and its citizenry. We believe core and essential services have to be regularly addressed and maintained so that infrastructure doesn't fall too far behind, and that we don't put our staff and safety personnel in positions of having to work with outdated technology and equipment. Quality of life projects and initiatives help make the community a great place to live. Investment and quality of life programs contribute to overall community health and well-being and can be, and can ultimately pay for themselves by growing local businesses, increasing sales tax dollars, and bringing in dollars from outside, outside our community, tourist dollars, if you will. From an economic development perspective, quality of life issues consistently rank in the top five concerns of companies who are considering expanding within your community or relocating into your community. So the investment by the numbers, as Lisa mentioned earlier, the numbers we've been working with on the public safety and transportation components of Phase One were largely derived from work done by city staff and the, and the capital improvement committee, so thank you for that. These numbers, we believe, I believe or was told, were presented to the council on or about March 25th by Dr. Jason Peak, Director of Transportation, during his review of the pavement management plan. Generally, those numbers included about $8 million for a westside fire station, which is desperately needed, and it would, I believe, replace Station Number Two or potentially replace Numbers, Station Number Two, which is a little bit outdated, although very great-looking on that corner. Would also include replacing and upgrading the police fleet, and also would support money for improving information technology and emergency communications and the emergency communications network. Additionally, Phase One included some discussion about an annual funding mechanism to raise money for ongoing improvements to our streets, our intersections, our intersections, traffic signals, sidewalks, and trails. Right now, the city has fund, some funding for that, but that funding appears to be, appears to be short of improving and growing our streets and, our streets and, and control systems. The estimate for the investment necessary for Phase One of the quality of life components at this time is just a very, very general number. We have done a lot of work, we have a lot of educated guesses and assumptions, but with that being said, our estimates are in the range of approximately $20 million, and those include funding for a, the youth sports complex, the Boomer Lake Amphitheater project and the boardwalk, and an extension of the Trail System Master Plan, which the council has reviewed. We know that financing for public projects is somewhat limited. Typically, you're limited to GO bonds and, and revenue bonds and/or some sort of sales tax support, and while we've looked at some of these numbers, we don't have any real specifics on that. That's part of the reason we came to the council this evening to make this presentation was to seek your advice and counsel on whether you think we're going the right direction on these projects, and then certainly to encourage your advice and counsel on how we might finance these projects. So I would like to just close by thank you again for hearing our presentation. We appreciate everything you, you all do for the City of Stillwater, and we look forward to continuing this process and working with you and city staff to, to flesh this out and, and help it come into, come into being. With that, I would close, ask for questions, and, and encourage your, your advice and support. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on this presentation?
I have one.
Okay.
Just to make sure I'm clear. Stillwater's water issues are funded, and this money has nothing to do with the funding of water. Am I correct?
Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to the guy that's responsible for backing that up, Mr. Blankenship.
The mayor is correct. The, the water issues are being addressed with funding that's been set aside from the rates, so 100% of the, of the issues are, are being addressed by revenues from water rates.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question? You have any question?
No, I don't. I'm pretty.
Just, just a comment. I appreciate you folks coming and sharing your thoughts with us. A couple of things that I heard that I really like express was the notion of phasing. You can't do this all in one shot and call it done. It's going to take some program planning and thoughtful planning and phasing as, as we move forward. And secondly, I'm very impressed with the list of people that have been actually getting together on their own time and talking about these kind of quality of life initiatives that, you know, we hear so much about, but we don't always take action to implement. And I'm glad to see that you've given some thought and some time to that. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience. I appreciate you putting that time in. I, I agree with you, Stan. I think the time just might be right to try something like this.
One of the things that I really appreciated about the study, that it's, it's, brings up the economic development factors while we're still trying to improve the quality of life, and I think those are things that help us to pay for the whole deal, and I do know that quality of life is very much of an influence whenever you're trying to grow a city and you're trying to grow your, your economic base. So I appreciate the fact that we looked at, that you looked at a broad spectrum of things, and I see the economic development factor being very important.
I'd agree with all, all comments made. What, and I think- What, and I think, I guess Jerry, I guess I don't know who the question's to, but what I took, what, yeah, come on up if you want. That's fine. Where we're at now...
I really wasn't prepared for questions.
I don't think you're going to have to come up with creative thoughts. I think it's a straightforward question here. The private sector group has worked on the private side issues, and the public sector side has worked on the public side.
That's correct.
And now, what I heard from you is it's time to fully bring those together. Is that a fair...
That's correct.
Okay. So what it sounds like we need is we need to tell staff, work with a group, to flesh out issues. Because I know that from what I got from the presentation, what's hanging out there, we've got some issues that need to be fleshed out. You know, projects, what projects what cost? The financing of those projects, what is feasible, timing, those kind of things, and that's something that's going to require city staff to be involved with. And so we've got some issues to get fleshed out on it. Timeframe, what kind of timeframe?
We would like to proceed as aggressively as possible and get some sort of resolution on project priority and financing structure and costs, I would say, in the next 90 days, 30 days, pretty quickly.
Could your group be prepared to come back with the presentation by, you know, into summer?
I believe that we definitely could, certainly.
Okay.
I think that's appropriate.
Is that fair? So staff, get at it. Is that what we're saying? Staff, get at it. Okay. And I want to thank everyone that not only is here but has been working on this because this could be a very important positive turning point in our city on so many fronts. The balance between the public sector side and those type of essentials, along with the essentials of quality of life. I'm looking forward to the fleshing out of those issues so we can get to the right Stillwater balance for what we need for our Stillwater. So anyway, thank you guys very much. Any other questions for anybody?
Thank you.
How exciting is it to be part of the process?
Very exciting.
Let me ask a question so I understand. What the council's consensus is, is that staff work with the Our Stillwater group and to help to identify project priorities, define scopes, prepare cost estimates, and look at how those projects might be financed. Am I hearing that correct?
I would say that along with the Capitol Campaign Committee, because I think they've done a lot of work.
Okay, with the CIP ad hoc. Continuation of that.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. I think I understand.
Got what you need?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We've got a few people clearing, so we'll give them a quick second.
Hi. Really good group that actually showed up and in a positive way. How was the idea?
Okay. That takes us down to our second general order, the request to rezone property addressed as 1,000 East Virginia. Ms. Dennison?
Thank you, Paula Dennison, Development Services. Again, just a very quick recap. This is a request to, the formal request that was submitted was to rezone from RSS to RTM. You heard at the March 4th and then at the May 6th meeting, that request verbally has changed to RT instead of RTM. This was tabled from the May 6th meeting. The public hearing was held March 4th. Again, here's the property and the hatched area and aerial of the property. And just for your consideration, the difference between the RT two-family residential and the RTM two-family and multifamily residential. And we have, staff has confirmed that the covenants have been recorded with the county.
Any questions?
It has been recorded, it's been changed.
Yes, ma'am, I've got the question.
Any other questions of staff?
No, it's time, sir.
Is there a motion on this item?
I move that we accept the request to zone the property RT.
We have a motion and a second, and before we vote, I'd like to make the statement that the votes that didn't occur prior, I know I was prepared to vote RT in March, and I was prepared to vote RT in May. Zoning boils down to what does a zoning code allow for? And RT fits this piece of property. We've got a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
Off of the question.
There we go. And that passes five to zero. Takes us down to general order, item C, discussion of fiscal year budget and consideration of June 3rd as a date for the public hearing. Does council have any other questions? We've had several budget presentations, had opportunity to ask questions. Ms. Alexander, if there are questions, will you be the one? Do we have any other questions that we want or any changes we want for that proposed, the published proposed budget?
I do.
You do?
Is it okay? Just curious, Marsha, just to help me tie the fiscal years together, in terms of the amount required from the SUA to fund the general budget, is that requirement going up or down?
That's a good question. I believe, it looks like it is going up because of all the capital needs of the general fund, the different items that we've put in. I believe this last year it was in the 15 million range. It looks like it's going up to 18.7 million.
And you're attributing that to the capital needs of the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's a big picture question. Now a little tiny picture question. Is there a splash pad in the budget?
I believe there is a splash.
There is not in the proposed budget. No, sir.
Is there an increase in replacement of parks' equipment?
Yes. There's one playground, two, one, two, two playgrounds.
Two playgrounds?
Was it 150 or 200,000? I mean, is it in that range in that last capital, which was?
If I have that information here, I believe.
Playground equipment's 225,000.
That'll allow for two playgrounds to be updated.
That was up from the original request.
Right, okay.
The original request was 125,000.
So any changes to the documents that were sent to us, the ones that would be published for the public hearing? And again, just as a reminder, everyone, that's the proposed budget for the public hearing, not necessarily the one that gets voted on, but the starting point. Changes can still be made at the public hearing, but we have to have something to publish.
Comments that the public makes could be later incorporated into a revised plan, right?
Yes. The documents that are in tonight are what we call the attachment that would go with the resolution, and the same format is what we would publish in the paper, so the public can come and talk about any item in the budget or propose additional items that may not be in the proposed document. And you listen to that discussion, and then councilors as well can still determine additional or changes to items, as well as taking that input from the public. Once the council reaches that consensus, that the budget's ready to go, then we would place on the agenda the resolution to actually adopt that budget.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I understand what we're doing, I'd be happy to make a motion to consider setting June 3rd, 2013, as the date of the public hearing to receive input on the budget as presented.
I have a second, Mr. Weaver, a motion?
Motion and a second.
And that's to actual set the public hearing for June 3rd.
That's what the request is.
Yes, sir.
And that passes five to zero. Takes us down to ordinances, and we have a second reading on ordinance 3230. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance authorizing the extension of the lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract dated April 1, 1979, providing for citizen-initiated referendum of said lease in accordance with Section 4-2 of the Stillwater City Charter.
Question on this second reading?
Mayor, I'm in approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And that passes five to zero. Takes us down to report from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman, before your part, I'd like to cancel or not call the executive sessions two and three.
Okay. So then the only request tonight would be for an executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307B2 to discuss labor negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2095.
Okay. Senior Sam, Mr. Galloway. Mr. Blankenship, do you have anything?
Just one thing this evening, Mayor. There's an opportunity on June 11th, which is a Tuesday from 1:00 to 2:30. The American Public Power Association is offering a webinar on rate-making for utility boards and city councils. I know that we've had a fair amount of discussion about that in the recent past, so if any of the council members are interested in sitting in on such a webinar, I'd be happy to make arrangements to have that here at City Hall. And it's, although it's put on by the American Public Power Association, the philosophy or approach towards rate-making applies to all of the utilities that we own. So I've participated in a number of programs by the APPA, and they've all been excellent. So I would encourage it, but if you're interested, let me know, and I'll schedule that.
I'd be interested if...
Would you send the emails to contact at the dates and the times?
I will do that.
Wonderful. Okay. Anything from councilors?
No, it's time, sir. Prayers with all the people across the state.
Very much so, very much so. I just have a couple. The first, a congratulations to the city of Stillwater. Oklahoma Special Olympics has presented the city of Stillwater with the SINAR Award, which is their highest volunteer award. Is that fair, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
For the work that the city does each year for the last 30 years for hosting the Special Olympics? And while the city, the community, has done a lot of work, and the city itself and city staff has done a lot of work, and I'd like to specifically thank the city staff that puts in so much time and effort, and specifically thank Mr. Jim Scott for the work that he has done on these projects also. So while the award says "City of Stillwater," it really needs to read a lot of different people's names. So, but it's a very big award, and we were very honored when they presented it to us last week, two weeks ago, at the Special Olympics Summer Games. So anyway, congratulations, and thank you for all that people do to make Special Olympics Summer Games a great event. And then tomorrow, tune in, KSPI 815, I'll be on talking with Bill Van Ness about what's going on in the city. So 815 on KSPI AM. And then, quite possibly, the more important things that we're going to do tonight is we need to say "Happy Birthday" to the twins.
He's overnight.
Share a birthday later this week, so happy birthday to Vice Mayor Hopkins and Dan Blankenship.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Anything for upcoming meetings?
Mr. Mayor, that was great.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
I don't know if they look that much alike, but...
Surely they do, haven't they?
Anyway, okay. That takes us down to, we get a motion to go to executive session on item one on the agenda.
I move to go to executive session on item one.
Last second.
Okay. We will move to executive session.